Welcome everyone to a brand-new year. It's 2016. It's a Happy New Year to those of us who've not seen one another for the beginning of the year. And welcome to our very first live streaming that's going on. So, we're going out there on the world wide web for all to see today. So, I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if there is a disclosure of any pecuniary interests under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Seeing none, I will move on to presentations. Our first item in our presentations is Hyder One Power Play Community Investment. I'd like to call forward John McDonald, please.
I feel real privileged here, first one up on the new... This is great, Mary. Thank you very much. And Happy New Year, everybody. And thanks for inviting me out to Centre Wellington and the Ponceby Recreation Group. I don't know if they're present or not, or if this is part of you people as well. Hi, I'm John.
I'm Shirley Briggan, President of the Park.
Oh, great. So Shirley applied for a grant from the Hyder One and for money to put towards the park, help build, structure a playground for children of that area. And Hyder One, at this time, I mean, we build lines and towers and poles and sometimes we're a little bit, you know, we're, we have to get these things done for the communities. And this is a great time to give back to the children of your communities, help out for the health, and hope, you know, accessible for kids that are less fortunate, that can't get into these areas. And it's real good to see people like yourself putting these parks together and creating a better place for all of us to live in the community. So, it's just wonderful and thank you very much. So, at this time, unless you have something you want to say, at this time, I'd like to present a check here for the Ponceby Restoration Club, and it's for $7,500.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Could you please come forward? We're going to take a picture and... Kelly, would you like to step into the photograph?
Anybody else want in?
You guys in the background though? Like, everybody close up, you won't see them. Could you fit closer?
Oh, hang on a second. To resume our meeting and but to say thank you very much to Shirley on behalf of our community for applying for that grant. It's significant dollars and we really appreciate you doing that. Thank you to Hyder One for seeing the worthiness of Ponceby, and we truly appreciate your investment into our community, and we know that the children in that area are going to enjoy it very much. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you very much.
Our next presentation is actually on the Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan, and I'd like to call up Philip Wass Jr. And it's regarding urban forest, and you're from the company of Urban Forest Innovations?
Yes, I am. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and members of the committee and staff for having me here today. I am going to go very quickly through a presentation. I think you may have had a copy of it, but I have a lot of slides. I want to try and get through them really quickly, so bear with me if I skip through things fast. Hopefully, I can address any questions when I get through it. So, we wanted to talk today about the Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan. If you haven't had the background on this pest, it's a non-native invasive wood-bore beetle that came to us from China. It was first found in Canada and in the USA in 2002, and subsequently, in the last 14 years, has killed literally millions of trees across northeast USA, spreading across the US, Ontario and Quebec. The way it destroys trees physically is basically eating through a thin layer of tissue just under the bark. That tissue is where the tree stays alive by moving things up and down, and it damages... You can see in the lower part of these photographs, some initial galleries, what are called galleries, and in the center photograph, you see what it looks like under the bark after a few years, where the larvae have eaten away at the wood, and the tree can't transport any longer, and we fairly quickly have a dead tree. And those dead trees, there is already research to show that they become brittle fairly quickly and potentially hazardous. So, just to, I said it's, as I mentioned, it started in 2002, and I just have a few maps just showing sort of the spread. By 2008, we can already see that it was across northeast in the United States and coming into Ontario. If we go to 2009, we had further fines through the Canadian Food Inspection Agency that was doing surveys across Ontario. And in 2013, we can see the further spread, and I know the map's pretty small, but of import to us is the number of fines found in southern Ontario, increasing through all of that. And in response to that, the latest, let's say, regulatory framework that we work with is the, through the Canadian Food Inspection Agency, and they have regulated areas, which initially was municipality by municipality, regulating the outflow of wood materials from infested areas. In recognition that virtually all of southern Ontario is infested, whether they found it or not, currently, you can see on the map, basically up to the French River and up into northern Quebec is all regulated, which is not a good sign for everybody. What it does do is it doesn't, we, because we found it here in Centre Wellington, we don't have specific regulations that limit what we do. As long as we don't take wood waste outside of the yellow lines on this drawing, we can manage whichever way we see fit. So, by all indications, this pest is here to stay, and we know that 98% or more of trees which aren't treated in some way to prevent their death are going to be gone, and likely within the 10 to 15 years. And if you look at the photograph that we're seeing now, this is a community that had healthy, vigorous ash trees along its streets, and a few years later, this is the same street. And regrettably, we see this pattern repeating itself all over Ontario, and Centre Wellington is now facing the same problem. In the bigger picture, in terms of a support for this type of problem, we don't really have a federal program that's contributing directly to EAB management, and we also don't have really a provincial program, certainly no direct funding that's coming for this issue. So, the problem in Centre Wellington is, like most places, it rests with the municipality to wrestle with the management of this pest. Over the course of last year, our firm was engaged in starting to look at how to manage, and we always say, you know, if you don't know where it is and what it is, it's hard to manage it. So, we started with an inventory, and with the available funds, we tackled, started with the urban centers along streets and parks. And our findings are that we've inventoried so far around almost 2,700 ash trees. And it's really important that everybody recognizes that all the figures that we're throwing out here today in terms of management only deal with these trees that we have so far inventoried. It does not include rural road network, trails, wooded areas, or any other township-owned properties that may have ash trees on them. Up to date, to date, they're not inventoried. We can see in the graph here just a representation of what the condition of those trees looks like at the different sizes, so smaller trees on the right to larger trees on the left. But fairly consistently, we see not too many really poor-conditioned trees, a lot of fair-conditioned trees, and some good-conditioned trees in the green. And so, knowing where they are and what condition they're in can help in management decisions. Oh, excuse me. And so, as part of that exercise of going out and finding those trees, we also collected mappable coordinates. So, all of these tree locations, which I just referenced, have been passed on to the GIS people here at town, and so there's now a layer that can be pulled up in the GIS which gives a point for every ash tree and information about it. So, we now have a much better handle on what the ash situation is, at least in the urban situation. Based on what we see out there, we would estimate that the infestation is in sort of the mid-to-early or mid, early-to-mid stage. You can see on this graph sort of a curve, starting first four years, very little increase, then somewhere between four to eight years, we start to see the curve start to go up, and really, an exponential growth of the death of the ash trees. This is in an unmanaged situation, and this pattern is, comes from research across communities that have gone through the full infestation. So, based on what we see out there in terms of finding some infested trees out there already, we estimate that we're somewhere in that, in that four-to-eight-year period, and in the next few years, we're going to start to hit that exponential death phase of the problem. So, if we leave the pest unmanaged, this is how it will manage the ash population. And some of the problems with letting that happen, as you can see that sort of from eight to 12, 13 years, there's a lot of trees going to be dying all at the same time. And some of the, a lot of the approaches to management try to think about, we know we're going to lose the trees, can we manage the trees over time ourselves to even out that work burden, let's say, the costs over time, and also the potential risk? Because once these trees are dead, if they are, if they have what we would call in the business a target nearby, then they can become a liability fairly quickly, and they need to be managed at a minimum for that. And some of the impacts, of course, are environmental impacts, economic impacts, the cost of managing it, and also some social impacts with the loss of trees in the urban setting. So, then we looked at trying to give the Centre Wellington some options for management. And so, if we look at any management strategy, there are sort of basic components that we need to look at, detection and monitoring. So, we've started that process by doing inventory, but we may also have to monitor that population over time to look at how things are progressing. We can look at control, and control is either through using some sort of tree injection approach for trees to protect them, or removal of trees. And then restoration and rehabilitation. Are we going to lose all of those trees and not replace them? Are we going to start tree planting now, later? And then, when we get into some of the wooded areas, there may be some sort of natural area management implications if we look at that. And the last one is community and outreach, communication and outreach, and we find in all of our work with this type of work, that it's really important that as the township engages in a process, that they should make that information really available to the public. And it can be helpful in many ways, because we're only talking about the municipally-owned trees, but of course, on private property within Centre Wellington, the homeowners have to deal with this problem as well. So, the communication can be helpful in both directions. So, we looked at four possible management scenarios, and of course, we have these four scenarios, they could still be shifted around, but to try and give an idea of what different management approaches might look like. So, we, I'm going to just lay out quickly four management approaches, from what we called a minimal management approach, to what we call an aggressive management approach. And in the minimal management, the first thing that we look at is that high-risk and poor-conditioned trees should be removed, and there's no consideration for replacement planting. And we would call this sort of the municipal minimal obligation. The do-nothing is unfortunately not an option. These trees have to be managed to some extent to rid yourself of the potential liability that could arise. If we do no planting, and we look at how the costs would add up based on our modeling, over the next 10 years, it would be approximately $1.4 million just to deal with the urban trees that we've found so far. So, at the minimal side of it, there's a low complexity, it's the least cost, mostly because there's no replacement planting going on. On the negative side, we're going to lose most of those trees. There could be an increased risk potential, because if we wait for the trees to die and we don't find them, then that could, that could cause problems. And also, there's no replacement, so the aesthetics and social benefits are being lost. And the last one being, as I said, if we let the pest take over, at a certain point, there's going to be so much, so many dead trees to manage, that it may be difficult to get actual people to come and do that work, and it may cost more because they're coming in sort of an emergency situation. If we look at the moderate management scenario, it basically is the same as the first one, except it adds in replacement planting at a one-to-one ratio. So, if we were to lose 2,600 trees to the ash borer, we would look over the course of the plan to plant back 2,600 trees to try and replace those losses. On the plus side, we're getting trees back, and also, if we plan that correctly, we can increase the species diversity throughout these places and try and reduce the risk of losing so many trees at once if something comes along. Then we get into the next two, and the change here is that what we call is now active management. So, we look at the trees, if you remember the slide, we looked at the condition of trees, and there were some of them that were noted as good condition. So, we would look at treating those trees with some form of tree injection to protect them from being lost. And then, the untreated trees would be removed either in a proactive fashion, or as in the original one, we would call it reactive. When the trees die, we take them down. In a proactive management, we identify, these trees are all going to go, we're going to take a certain proportion of those trees down regardless of whether they're infested or not, because we're going to try and get that cost spread over time. And so, we can retain some trees, we can retain some of the benefits, and there is some greater complexity, because you have to plan which trees to treat and monitor those, but with the information you have, that's a fairly straightforward exercise. And then, the last one is in aggressive management. We would say a greater proportion of the trees that are in good condition are treated. And in this one, this was a very aggressive replacement strategy, so we looked at not only replacing each tree, but actually replacing it with two trees, so that we increase the canopy cover over time. And so, those are the four scenarios. This graph just shows the different costs modeled over the next 10 years or so, and I'm not going to outline each of the different lines, but obviously, I think obviously, the black line at the bottom is the minimal management program with no replacement costs. Then you have a jump to the, to the having replacement trees and treating some trees, and then the aggressive management is at the top. And the reason there's two lines at each level is that there are two different types of products that could be injected in the tree with some different associated costs. Quick look at what other municipalities are doing. Everybody usually, when we do this, likes to know what's going on, so we gathered some of the information that we have, and I won't go into a lot of detail, but I thought for your future consideration, if you wanted to see what kind of programs and what kind of investment other people are doing, you can see that from these, and there's a range of different responses from different-sized communities in southern Ontario. And so, then we get to where we are now. So, I gave a range of strategies. Those are some of the things we could do over time, and there needs to be some further decisions on what to do. In the short term, with the budget that's allotted for this year, the priorities we lay out would be to focus on the removal of high-risk trees that we identified through the inventory, or trees which are already infested. And for all of the, all of the strategies other than the minimal one, they all involve some kind of replanting. And so, if we were going to replant, the best way to replant is not to wait until the trees are gone and replant, but actually start planting at the front end as well, so that in 10 years' time, we'll start to have some 10-year-old trees already in place. So, in order to do that, we need to know where to plant trees, and we've put into these models what we call a plantable spaces inventory, which would be an assessment of the urban areas once again, looking for places where trees could be planted now, so that because you can't plant a tree immediately, exactly where an ash tree that you just took out. So, that would allow for planning of the planting that can be done. And because of the budget limitations this year, we would only be able to, in terms of a replanting program, we would have a limited number of trees that we could replant with the current budget. And as I mentioned, you know, I don't want to be a fear monger, but one of the things that really drives all of this is basically the risk that these trees can pose. We know in nature, ash trees, we don't see them standing up for very long. Once they're dead, they're known to decay at the base and fall over, and that's not to say that that's going to happen right away, but we know that these trees, it's a management priority when they're dead, they start to decline fairly quickly. And so, if for nothing else, we need to manage on that, on that risk side of things. And so, I talked about planting strategy. Here, you can see this is, we did some work in the city of Cornwall, and you can see the small trees planted in amongst the ash trees, in recognition that they're going to lose those trees, and so this is, this is the strategy of preplanting or underplanting. We need to take a few things into consideration when we're looking at what to decide with these different management plans. What is the value of the ash trees in Centre Wellington and to the community? What's the cost and the efficacy of some of those management plans? So, when we were, when we get down to the detail of choosing trees for injections, we can look at a, at a range of different criteria for what makes a high-value tree. And I won't take you through each of these for the sake of time, but we need to consider a bunch of different things in which trees to treat and which ones not to treat. And so, things like size, health, structure, are they infested or not? Where are they? What their potential value might be? There are, I mentioned that one of the options in terms of retaining trees is to do tree injection. There are two different products that are currently registered for treating the trees. One is triazin, and the other one is a product called Imajet, and they have different modes of activity, different injection methods, and different costs associated with them. But you will see in the end, if you look carefully at those costs over time, the cost of injection and the difference between the two is not really significant on a year-to-year basis, but could be a savings over the 10-year plan, depending on which way you went. And that's because there, in terms of good-conditioned trees that we saw in the whole population, there weren't that many. So, even if we treated all of them, the treatment costs don't make a big difference compared to the removal and replacement costs. And as I've mentioned a couple of times, what we, what we haven't addressed so far, and I think needs to be thought of in terms of the future planning, is that beyond those streets and parks, we have those other areas that I mentioned to you, a rural road network, woodlots that are owned. Those don't need to be managed for every tree, but if they have trees near the edge, which could fall out into a roadway or neighboring properties. And then, over the longer term, you know, some of those natural areas may need management in terms of invasive species coming in and things like that. So, the next step, once we decide how to manage those street trees, is starting to look at those other trees and finding out what the obligations or opportunities might be there. And then, lastly, staff asked me to just talk briefly about a bit of the bigger picture, how this might fit in. We're talking specifically about an Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan, which is a pest of one of the species in the urban forest. Our group has had the pleasure of working with many municipalities to look at how EAB fits into the bigger picture. Centre Wellington, I think, is slated for some fairly significant growth in the next period of time. And so, if we look at the urban forest and management of the urban forest, we think about trees differently in the urban setting. They're not wood or timber or firewood. They're managed really for the benefits that come to people living amongst them. And on the list are a bunch of them. Air quality, property value, stormwater, energy conservation, wildlife habitat. Many of these things are the values that we get from having trees. And in most places, we take those for granted, but we don't actually have on the other side of things that we're getting benefits, but there's costs associated with getting them. So, an urban forest management plan looks at trying to see how we can best manage trees over a period of time, and really, this is just to follow on to the benefit slide, that what we know from plenty of research which is coming out is that if we have a town full of the large stature of trees on the left side of the graph with big canopies, we get exponentially more of those benefits that we're investing in when we're working with trees. And so, we look at, we've developed an approach to looking at how can a municipality of various sizes from a region to, we've worked with Cambridge, with Mississauga, we're working in Ottawa now, and developing this strategic plan with a 20-year outlook at the top end, divided into smaller management periods, more manageable time periods, and then looking at annual operating based on the budgets and funds available. The idea of this longer-term plan is to build in the idea of adaptive management, that we don't know exactly what's coming. We, you know, we experienced recently, for example, a major ice storm in this part of the world, and many communities had tremendous damage to their trees, but they could have never predicted that. So, the idea of adaptive management is that we have a bigger plan in place that we're working towards, and if something comes along that shifts us off that, we need to be able to adjust the plan, but carry it on. And so, if we just go back to this, to this graphic, the way we try to incorporate that is between the five-year management periods, it gives an opportunity to reflect on what the goals and objectives were for that period of time, whether you met them or not, and then to set new goals for the next five-year period, working with your successes and some of the challenges that you may have. And, you know, this just gives an idea of some of the kind of components that get addressed, and you can see in the foreground, we have plant healthcare, that's just to show that, you know, we're starting to talk about EAB here. But that's one component of things which need to be thought of. So, there's tree establishment, there's tree maintenance, there's tree protection, tree risk management, inventory, gathering that and managing that, plantable spaces, et cetera. So, without laboring it too much, the idea is to have a plan that tries to address each one of these components from a strategic level into a five-year management, and then help to guide your day-to-day and your budgeting processes over time. And we've used this model now, as I mentioned, fairly successfully across many municipalities of different sizes across southern Ontario. And the work that you're starting to do and looking at with Emerald Ash Borer will probably give you some insight into what some of the complexities of managing trees are. And over time, if the community's going to be growing and intensifying, to try and keep the nature of the community with regards to trees will present some challenges. So, this might be helpful in that, in that exercise. And so, I'll leave it at that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about the presentation.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions? Yes, Counselor McElwain.
Thank you. I have a couple. Excuse me. One of them is with the injections, and just curiosity, at one point at least, with triazin, or triazin, however it's pronounced, it needs continual injections, like every couple of years or something of that nature? How long does that carry on? Forever, or, I mean, is there a period when...
It's a really good question. So, the frequency of injection really has to, is predicated by the way the infestation comes. So, as you saw in that curve, at the beginning, there's a fairly low level of infestation. So, the frequency of injection can be, for either of the products that are available, can be on a biannual basis. The idea being that the intensity of the infestation won't kill the tree between treatments. When we start to get into the really active phase of the infestation, we start to see a lot of trees dying, which means a lot of pest in, and a lot of pest... a lot of trees dying, which means a lot of pest and a lot of pest pressure on the trees that we're trying to treat. So during that period of time, I think in the modeling we did, we were just looking at that, I think we modeled for both of them, something like a four or five-year period where annual injections would have to be done. But then at a certain point, once the inevitable losses occur and the trees that you're injecting become some of the few trees left, it's certainly possible to reduce that frequency. And we don't know yet because this is also new for everybody, but we hope that there would be a time when it may not be necessary any longer because the pest pressure will become so low. If there's only a few trees there being treated, there's no habitat for the pest to continue. That's what we hope. We also hope that there's some research, some optimistic research looking at biological approaches, introducing other things which like to eat the Emerald Ash Bore. And over time, nature may introduce some other competition for EAB. So either one needs to track how the infestation is and at the back end, we're not entirely sure.
Thank you. The other, my other is actually not so much a question as a comment. I noticed in your document, you had mentioned mulching as a waste wood management. Mulching in Centre Wellington is not highly recommended because we have a lot of termites.
Okay.
So I just, I think it should be kind of removed from a recommendation, that's all. It's something we don't want people doing if we can manage it.
Forgive me for my ignorance, but do termites nest in mulch?
They eat it like caviar, unless it's bark mulch.
Okay, certainly. Well, then, you know, that's the type of local knowledge that we're looking for when we put our draft and our information forward and certainly we can remove that recommendation in future documents.
Councillor Kittriss.
Thank you. I was wondering if there are any evidence of the Emerald Bore, Emerald Ash Bore attacking other species of trees, like cherry trees or anything like that?
I can't say gospel, but to date, no. I do remember vaguely hearing about maybe one other species that they might have found them in, but there, like many things, the Emerald Ash Bore evolved, co-evolved with ash trees. It evolved in Asia. And in fact, when they first discovered this pest, the first challenge was to find out what the heck it was because there was sort of one research paper somewhere in the back library of China about this pest. Because over there, it's just an insect that feeds on the tree every once in a while. The tree resists, there's lots of natural enemies for it, and it never rises to a population where it can decimate the trees. So it evolved with ash trees. When they brought it over here and it escaped, it's looking for ash trees. We don't know. I mean, perhaps if it runs out of ash trees, maybe, but we haven't seen that so far. There's another significant urban tree pest, the Asian Longhorn beetle, which you may have heard of. And it's a bit of a different challenge because it does have a broad host range, but it's also a lot slower in moving around. So there's pluses and minuses.
Mayor Linton.
Through your councillor. There aren't any companies or industries out there, I mean, if we're losing all these trees, they haven't figured out a way to make money from the wood yet, have they?
Well, there, I mean, there's, we've done a lot of research into, you know, quote-unquote wood waste, which I don't really like as a term because we're trying to find a use for it. So there is a lot of different things that have been and can be done with the wood, but it's finding, you know, local economies that want to deal with that. That's a challenge.
I have a question. You did mention that there are other predators that are in Asia that are attacking these larvae. Is there any way of introducing or is anyone considered introducing those natural predators into these areas?
Well, it's a, I think there certainly is consideration for that. I think more of the work, the research has been focused on finding native predators here, such as there's a different species of wood wasps that tend to go after these types of pests. The problem with bringing a, an aggressor from somewhere else is that it too would find itself in a similar situation to EAB where it comes to a place and it doesn't have any of its own predators. So you can actually introduce another problem. And there's historically, I mean, you read a little bit about Australia and their woes with introducing pests. So it's a bit of a challenge. There's certainly work looking at that and looking at the possibility of introducing other pests. In fact, I think they may have even tried starting to bring some, but on a very limited and, you know, trial basis because of the dangers involved in releasing another insect that may have, you know, unknown consequences.
This is just an observation. I do a little bit of math when I hear big numbers and I was looking at that. And just for our reference, we're talking about $500 a tree on the minimal note doing anything and $900 a tree doing something. So this is a significant cost per tree. And I think that if we're facing it as a township, then our residents may possibly face these costs as well. So it's important for us to find a way that we can all work on this plan together in a fiscally prudent way to handle it. Just an observation.
Thank you, Mary. I'd have to double down on what councillor Mary Lloyd said. I want to thank you for actually writing up this report because it sort of explains like the cost of this kind of program that you're suggesting for taxpayers. And I would like to also say that I think that the proposal that I came up with in the capital budget of having a community group work on this is making way more fiscal sense. Because we do have hydro trucks with lifts, we do have, I just think we have to rethink this instead of, you know, you're talking, the minimum is $1.4 million. That's just, I think this could be done for one-tenth of that personally on a community level. And I think that we should really strike up something to do with that and really put our heads together, be creative, be innovative. Because every dollar that you save means that, you know, in a normal business, you don't have to make $5. And so we need to really change the kind of dynamic and maybe the culture of how we're spending our money.
If I may just give one comment back to that. You know, the costs that we modeled are based on costs that we discussed with staff in terms of what would the average cost of a removal be? When we look at a removal in an urban situation, you also need generally to grind the stump out because you have a tripping hazard or you want to replant there. And we looked at what I think are quite reasonable costs for planting and establishing a tree. So, you know, we certainly, if other numbers, if you look at the details and you look at the numbers and say, you know, well, we think that maybe those costs could be adjusted, we'd be happy to put different numbers into the model to give you an idea of what an alternative approach might cost.
Councillor Kittriss. I appreciate your comments. I think that as a closet lumberjack, I can tell you that I had tree stumping done this summer with a student. We did like 60 trees. You know, I showed him, I trained him. We cut down, I cut down trees and the size of these trees are not all large trees, as you know. They're small trees. And so to have like the cost, I think seeding sampling 6,000 little trees in 10 years, they're going to be six, seven feet high. I think getting students to do that, I think that all these things that are more creative and cost-effective and using the community's resources, energy, and you know what? If there's private citizens, if we have a group, they'll help them too. And the wood, I'll tell you, ash is great firewood.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
We're going to move into the recommendation now as we've had all the questions here from council. The recommendation is that the council of the township of Centre Wellington receive the information presented by Urban Forest Innovations Inc. regarding the Emerald Ash Bore management plan for Centre Wellington and that the council of the township of Centre Wellington direct staff to implement strategies within the Emerald Ash Bore management plan based on the resources dedicated to the plan within the annual approved capital budget. So that's a recommendation here. Do I have a mover for that recommendation? Mayor Linton, seconded by councillor McQuine. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Kittriss.
I think we should revisit this and look at an alternative plan before we pass this. I think that's the fiscal responsible thing to do.
Councillor, or sorry, Mayor Linton.
I think in the budget, we set aside some money for this and we had a good discussion on that. I think if there's any opportunities for neighborhood to get involved in it on a volunteer basis, I'm, off the top, I'm very leery about that. I don't think that's the sort of thing that we want to put volunteers in, but if there are opportunities that do make sense, I think we can still move forward with that. Moving ahead with this recommendation doesn't preclude us to look at alternative ways of removing trees, but I think we had this discussion at budget time. And we did bring in an expert firm to give us their advice based on doing this with a number of municipalities and we have to take some, you know, take the experience that they've had, you know, they come in with some credible experience. And I think this recommendation, the way it's worded, gives us the flexibility to do things in a way that makes sense.
Councillor McQuine.
We have a reasonably small amount in the budget this year. And I think proceeding with that amount that has already been allocated with this plan gives us another 12 months to look at alternatives. But sitting back and doing nothing for a year can hurt a lot more and cost a lot more in the long run. So I think stopping to restart right now would be the wrong thing to do. Continuing and looking at alternatives over that year would give us another option.
Oh, thank you. Brian.
Madam Chair, I would just like to reaffirm with council that this is a starting point and isn't necessarily intended to be done all with, for instance, paid staff. Certainly when we have liability concerns with things like tree removal, there are proper ways to do that. And I think the opportunity for volunteer staff is very limited in that regard, if at all. However, I do think we have opportunities in the entire plan to look at for items such as tree planting and engaging the community in tree planting where they can assist us in augmenting the entire plan. So it is our intent to continue communication with the community. Neighbor Woods has been sitting in with us thus far in working on this present plan. And certainly we're encouraging them to stick with us as we work through the plan. You can see that in the financials that are laid out by the consultant. It is rather daunting and you can see that in this first year, we're very much below what would have been recommended in the first year of the plan. That is because we want to take the time to work with the community and come up with those strategies for alternatives, such as engaging volunteers or other revenue streams for things like the by-product. And we will continue to refine the plan. That is why the recommendation is stating that you receive it, not approve it, allow us to work within the guidelines, the parameters of the plan. And it's our intent to come at least annually, particularly in the timing with the capital budget, to detail how we're making out in that regard.
Councillor Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to pick up on what Brian said. That was my understanding of this is that we have a modest amount in the capital budget for 2016. I'm assuming that basically is going to go for removal of trees that we know are diseased. I don't know that for sure, but it's a modest amount in any event. This plan, and we receive the plan, we're not necessarily adapting it for implementation immediately because the plan itself gives us four potential strategies for management, which we haven't decided on yet. Right now, we're probably sub-minimal, I would assume, based on the money that's there now. And you got to choose in this plan, if we're going to adopt it, minimal, moderate, aggressive, what was laid out for us. So that is all to come, I'm assuming. That's not done today. So we adopt the plan because we have to do something. The do-nothing option is not an option. We do this year whatever we've provided funds to do and no more, which, and that's already decided. And then we move forward from there in terms of a broader management strategy involving the community, the other groups that are there, anybody else that's interested, and either adopt one of the management strategies that's laid out or tweak it or change it and move forward. That's what I understood we were doing and I'm okay with that. I fully agree that we don't want to agree today that we're spending $900 a tree or something like that to deal with this, but we're adopting a framework. We have some money set aside. We'll face this question each year in terms of funding, but at least this will give us a rough strategy, which we will have to refine and target much more succinctly in future years and put the funding there if we're going to do it. And that's where the debate will come in, is the level of community engagement and where else we can get funding for it. So this, I'm assuming, this is, I'm assuming is a preliminary step. We're taking it because we really don't have a lot of choice and we're going to move forward from there in terms of actual implementation as we go along. If that's the case, I'm for it. If not, I have some concerns.
Go ahead, councillor Kittriss.
I appreciate Brian, your comments and all the other councillors. I have to say that, yes, we are proposing to receive and the only options we have here is the lowest one is $1.4 million. I think that we should revisit this, not to delay it for a year, but revisit this and come up with a plan that is more fiscally sound for this community.
In the recommendation, it does say direct staff to implement strategies within, based on, like within the strategy we have, based on the resources that we've dedicated. And I believe over the next two years, it was about $300,000. Is that correct? So we're asking them to begin, we're not asking them to complete and to work out the strategy going forward, up to $300,000 that we have set aside currently in our, in our capital budget. So in no way are we accepting the 1.4 or the $2.5 million plan. We're saying we're giving you with the intent of $300,000 and let's start, put our big toe into the water and see how we can do this and work this program forward. So personally, this recommendation to me says you've got $300,000 as funding stands now with our three-year capital budget that was approved. Oh, thank you, Brian. Sorry.
Madam Chair, to confirm, certainly in the capital budget approved in 2016, there is $100,000 in the capital forecast, there's $200,000 predicted for 2017, which of course would need to be approved. I certainly understand your concerns, councillor Kittriss, about the costs that are presented to you today. That is the reality of where we're at today without taking any other mitigating approaches. So if we were to stand back and say, okay, if we don't have options such as engaging volunteers at opportune times or mitigating costs in any other way, here is the estimate of what this would cost. What we're saying to you is we want to begin, and essentially in the first year, we're saying 60/40, 60% removal, 40% planting, because we feel our number one strategy out of the blocks is to deal with the dangerous situations. blocks is to deal with the dangerous situations and to begin replanting for all the good reasons we've heard about today. Even with items such as injection, there is nothing in here today telling you we're going to do injections, but there's information in here telling you today that we are going to continue to evaluate that approach. We also suggest in here that if there are homeowners or private citizens who would like to participate in an injection scenario, we certainly would welcome the opportunity to discuss that with them and discuss how that would be paid for, meaning if they want to come up with the funding to do that, we're more likely to be leaning towards the injection approach as long as everyone understands what we're getting into. We still need to work out that level of detail, but this is more to give the, I don't want to overdo it, but the seriousness of what we will be facing, begin the approach and truly go through this in a planned and responsible manner. Nothing here today is committing you to a long-term financial commitment. It will be committed to annually.
Well, all right, one last comment.
I do take the seriousness of this problem. I am wondering, when you're saying planting, are we planting $500 trees this year?
Through you, Madam Chair. Certainly that isn't our initial approach. I was trying to make the point that if we were to do that approach with hired contractors or paid staff, the value can quickly get to that amount of money. What I'm telling you is that we want to encourage the community to work with us. We certainly can't force them to do that. We welcome the opportunity and if we can mitigate things like tree planting, which we have in the past in parks in Centre Wellington, to do planting, then certainly it will be less than a $500 tree planting. What we're saying is we're going to put $40,000 towards that component. The number of trees will be dictated upon how successful we are in mitigating those costs and it is our intent to work on that.
Okay, so the recommendation is moved and seconded, so I will call for the vote. All those in favor of this recommendation and opposed? It is carried. Thank you. So, sorry, technology. Our next item is the confirmation of our agenda. There's a recommendation that council of township of Centre Wellington confirm the agenda for the meeting held on January 18, 2016. We have a mover for that. Councillor Fisher, seconded by councillor McQueen, all in favor? And that is carried and we're moving forward. We have two sets of minutes. One is for committee of the whole November 9, 2015, and for council minutes, December 14, 2015. Was there any changes, recommendations or changes required? Everybody reviewed those? Then the recommendation is that the minutes of committee of whole meeting held November 9, 2015 and the council meeting held December 14 be adopted as circulated. Councillor McQueen, seconded by Mayor Linton, all in favor? And that is carried. We have no registered delegations, so move on to consideration of reports. Proposed zoning amendment application, RZ 10/15. Thank you, Marianna.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. The property is at 6827 and 6853 Sixth Line, West Garfrazza, the subjects of a joint rezoning application that's associated with a surplus farm dwelling severance and a lot line adjustment. The rezoning is a condition of provisional consent that was approved by the county on March 12, 2015. The purpose of the rezoning is to prohibit new residential development on the two farmed parcels that will be merged together, creating a 60 hectare farm parcel. A public meeting was held on November 30, 2015 with no oral or written submissions received. Comments have been received by the county and the GRCA with no objection to the rezoning. So staff is recommending approval of the rezoning application and enactment of the attached amendment to the zoning bylaw.
Any questions on that? So the recommendation is this fall that council of township of Centre Wellington approve the application, RZ 10/15, and the appropriate zoning bylaw amendment be given three readings. May I have a mover for that? Moved by Mayor Linton, seconded by councillor Kittriss, all in favor? Thank you. You may continue on, Marianna.
Thank you. Through you. Similarly, the property at 6695 Sixth Line, West Garfrazza, is also the subject of a rezoning application associated with a surplus farm dwelling severance and is a condition of provisional consent that was approved by the county on October 8, 2015. The purpose is to prohibit new residential development on the retained parcel. A public meeting was also held November 30, 2015 with no oral or written submissions received and comments were received by the county and the GRCA with no objection to the rezoning. So staff is also recommending approval of the rezoning application and enactment of the attached amendment to the zoning bylaw.
That recommendation is that the council of township of Centre Wellington approve application, RZ 11/15, and the appropriate zoning bylaw amendment be given three readings. May I have a mover for that? Councillor McQueen and seconded by Mayor Linton, all in favor? And that is carried. Next item is the notice of intent to designate 33 Henderson Street, Elora.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. The property at 33 Henderson Street in Elora is also known as the former Baptist Church and is the subject of this request for heritage designation based on its cultural heritage value to the community and as an effort to promote and protect its value. The detailed statement of value is provided in the staff report. The property meets all three of the provincial criteria for designation under the Heritage Act. At the meeting on November 17, 2015, Heritage Centre Wellington recommended that council state an intention to designate the property under Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act. The owners were invited to that meeting and attended where the matter was discussed and they indicated that they would have no objection to the designation or the heritage attributes that were identified in the bylaw or statement of value upon which the bylaw will be based. They were also notified of this meeting and offered the opportunity to provide any additional information to council. So staff recommends that council proceed with a notice of intention to designate the property and would be pleased to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Marianna on this? I'm going to read the recommendation. That the council of the township of Centre Wellington state its intention to designate the property municipally known as 33 Henderson Street to be of cultural heritage value and/or interest pursuant to Part IV of the Ontario Act, Ontario Heritage Act, RSO 1990, Chapter 0.18, Section 29, and that the staff be authorized to proceed with the notice requirements outlined, Section 29 of the Ontario Heritage Act, and that there is no obligations to, no objections to the designation in accordance with Section 29, Bracket 6, Bracket and of the Ontario Heritage Act, staff be authorized to present the designation bylaw to council for enactment. May I have a mover for that? Councillor Fisher, seconded by councillor Kittriss, all in favor? And that is carried. And now we have our community improvement plan, annual monitoring, and we welcome Pat.
As you can see by the report, our CIP has been in active application now for seven months. As required, under the CIP itself, we are required to do an annual monitoring report to council indicating our activities in the previous year. As you can see, we've had three completed applications for financial incentives. One is, you can see, across the street at the Elora Brewing Company, the Carger Gallery and a commercial building on Tower Street in Fergus. We have another partially completed application, which is John Thompson Furniture in Fergus, and we have another application which is in process. We have designated at this point four properties as priority sites under the CIP which allow them to have access to Level 2 financial incentives, the tax increment financing, and we are asking to designate an additional two properties. And I should clarify that the second property is 115 St George Street East, not North.
Are there any questions for Pat regarding this? Councillor Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just a question, Pat, I'm just reading the report and I just want to be clear. Am I right in saying that when it says here, we put aside $120,000 for CIP projects in 2015 or?
It was $60,000 for direct granting.
Okay.
And then it was another, there was another $60,000 available for loans which will be repaid to us.
Okay.
So.
And these ones that we have seen completed and the ones in the works, do they add up to all of that or is there anything left over?
No, we have, we spent approximately $34,000 in 2015 because it was really only a half of year of application because we didn't start making the grants available until May. So some of the applicants are still sort of getting up to speed on what it means and are interested in putting in applications. So we do still have, we did not spend all the money in 2015.
So is that surplus then rolled over into future years or what happens with that?
To answer your question, through councillor Lloyd, the funds for the grant are set aside in reserve and each budget year and so to answer the question, the funds, the unexpended funds are available going forward.
In addition to whatever funds we allocate for that given year?
That is correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, councillor Lloyd. I think one of the reasons that we moved ahead with the CIP was to encourage the private sector to also invest. Can you just give some of the numbers or let us know if we've been successful or not to encourage private sector funding as a result of this program?
When the consultant was here making a presentation on the CIP, she used some examples of neighboring municipalities and looked at a ratio of about three to one. So for every $3 the public sector, or for every dollar that we implemented, it was $3 from the public sector. We're seeing actually higher than that. If we actually look at the total value of the projects that we have put money towards, we're seeing about a 22 to one. So for every dollar we put in, it's $22 have been invested by the private sector. When we actually look at the portion of those projects that were eligible for grants from, or grants or loans from this project, we're looking at three and a half to one. So we're seeing a higher return on investment than even the surrounding municipalities we're seeing, so.
Councillor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mary. What do you mean by return on investment for the municipality?
We're seeing private sector investment, so this, a small number of dollars from the municipality have generated higher investment opportunities from the private sector.
Would they not have spent that money anyway? And so like what difference does it make whether we put in like, you know, 1/20 second of the value of what they're going to spend?
In some cases, they would have spent that money, in some cases, probably not. They would not have proceeded with the kind of enhancements that they were able to do because we put money into the project. We're also asking them to meet our urban design guidelines, which are, is an aspect for eligibility in the program and we may not have seen the kind of the quality of projects that we're seeing because of the grants. And I can tell you, at least one of the applicants, we really are encouraging him to use the full amount that he has available strictly because the building is a heritage building, it warrants it, it greatly needs the upgrade and it approves the appearance of the entire downtown if he will fix this building up.
I just wanted to mention something about the properties that are on St David Street and St George Street. This is a property that's currently going through some remediation and I know that those that live around that area would love to see something happen that looks a little more favorable in that area. Certainly, one of the suggestions was that it be turned into another parket like we have in downtown Elora. However, that I don't see happening in this area as it's really not an easy area for people to come to and congregate for parkland. However, I believe that there is interest in the redevelopment of that space once the land is remediated as we've had a demolition of a home happen on St George Street. So I'm quite hopeful that we'll see that project moving forward in the next year or two, which will, which will improve the look of that part of the gateway coming into Fergus.
Yes, we have had development inquiries on that property.
Okay. Got to get back to my agenda here. So we have the recommendation that the council of township of Centre Wellington accept this report for information and that council add the properties of 390 St David Street North and 115 St George Street East to the list of priority sites as required under the Community Improvement Implementation Report, PLN 2015-12, and direct staff to proceed with the implementation, and that council authorizes the use of all Level 2, that's 2 in brackets, financial incentives for these properties subject to additional approval by council on individual property basis. May I have a mover for that? Yes, question, councillor Kittriss?
What kind of funds are we planning on giving like Suncor, which is the multi-billion dollar corporations? Like, like, why would they, like, what's the motivation for us to do that?
Well, we're not giving them any funds until, and we haven't been approached to be asked. We've just indicated that those properties are eligible should there be redevelopment on those properties. It doesn't mean they're going to ask and it would be subject to an individual agreement with the township and it would have to come to council for approval.
Councillor McQueen?
I'm just moving.
Okay, moved by councillor McQueen, seconded by Mr. Mayor, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is community service facility closure schedule and I'm welcoming Dorothy.
Good afternoon, everyone. My first report is just our recommendation for our facility closure schedule for 2016. This is nothing out of the ordinary. It's what we do every year to advise our customers of upcoming big events that will affect the hours of operation and so on and it's pretty much a carbon copy of what we did a year ago.
Are there any questions regarding the closure report? Councillor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mary. I was just wondering, do you get very many inquiries for the holidays to use the facilities?
Unfortunately, no. If we do, we will look at the schedule and review it. If it's something that's feasible for us to do, we'll consider it, absolutely.
Seeing no other questions, we have a recommendation that the council of the township of Centre Wellington approve the committee services 2016 facility operations schedule. Could I have a mover for that? Councillor Kittriss, seconded by councillor McQueen, all those in favor? And that is carried. I'm sorry. Technology is not my friend. The next item that we have is the Fergus Agricultural Society rental agreement.
Thank you. Every five years, we meet with the members of the board for the Fergus Fall Fair to renew their agreement with us on renting our facility at the Sportsplex and this current agreement just
And this, this current agreement just expired December 31st. So we met with members of the Fall Fair Board back in the fall to begin the process. And fortunately, it was a very easy process this year. And we've just had to make some minor edits to the agreement. And the biggest probably change to the agreement is the identification of all our new bleachers and, and the ownership process of those bleachers in the future. And the other amendment or edit that we made to the agreement was their annual fee. We increased it by 2%. And that is pretty much the changes for the Fall Fair agreement.
Are there any questions regarding that? Counselor Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions, just really from my information. The annual fee, the annual rental, whatever we call it, has that changed in any way or has it stayed the same?
We've always had a negotiated fee with them because of the educational component of the fair and so on with encouraging Fall Fair and, and the agricultural piece. Every year, every five years, we negotiate that fee and we implement a slight increase just to follow along with our regular rate and fee increase. And this year was 2%.
So the fee that's laid out in the agreement, is that the same dollar amount per year or does it increase annually?
It's the same dollar amount for, for the next five years.
Okay, so it's fixed for that year. All right. And the other question is just a, just something that struck me as, as interesting. As I understand, one of the changes with the bleachers, we're agreeing they can use these Trillium bleachers, which will be township property for a period of 10 years going forward from 2018? Is that?
They, the Fall Fair were the organization that applied for the Trillium grant for the bleachers. And they were rewarded, awarded the money. We then built in our annual budget additional bleachers to complement theirs. And so we came to the agreement that we need to have some ownership now with these bleachers. And part of the agreement with the bleachers is the movement of them. And typically, we charge events for that. The Fall Fair, because they're the ones that got the agreement or the, the funding for their bleachers, we will take ownership of them beginning in 218. They'll be responsible for moving the bleachers on their own, so no cost will be incurred to the, to the township.
And as I read it, unless I'm wrong, they have a right then to use these for 10 years after 2018?
But only them, only the Fall Fair for their event.
The only thing that struck me odd, and maybe it's just a, just a thing in the draft, this is a five-year agreement, but we're committing to something well beyond the term of that agreement. Theoretically, five years and there's no more agreement, but there's a 10-year commitment for the bleachers. How does, how does that work?
That's, that's a good question. Maybe Brian could jump in there?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think Brian will jump in there by saying that is a very valid point. And I think it's up to us to go back to the Fergus Fall Fair and communicate that, that we're committing to a five-year term. And that will go along with the bleachers. And we can, certainly not that we'll go back on our word, but we'll indicate that at the end of this five-year term, it's our intent to hopefully put that in the next five-year term. But of course, nothing's for sure until it's approved and signed.
Right. I think that was the only point is that I think you, you can't go beyond the term of it, so word it differently or something.
So Madam Chair, with that change, we will go back to the, the Fall Fair and with that change, we would ask for approval.
To negotiate it for five years.
Right.
So the recommendation that we have here really speaks to the lease agreement for five years, but this lease agreement is now going to be modified.
Correct.
So can we say is amended?
Perfect.
Okay. Alrighty.
Amended with respect to the bleachers or something like that. That's the only amendment.
So I'll read the recommendation that the council of the township of Centre Wellington authorizes the head of council and clerk to execute a lease agreement for the period of five years with the amendment of the, no, where am I putting in the words amendment? That the council of the township of Centre Wellington authorizes the head of council and clerk to execute a lease agreement as amended with respect to the bleachers for a period of five years with the Fergus Agricultural Society for the use of Centre Wellington Community Sportsplex facilities in Fergus for the Fergus Fall Fair. I have a mover for that, please? Mayor Linton and the secondar, Counselor McQueen, all in favor? Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Keep closing things and they keep opening. Guess I'm not doing it right. Okay, back here. Now we're on to our amendment of fees and charges by law with regards to our fire services. And that will be presented by? Alrighty. Come on forward, Wes. No, you've got to go on the hot seat.
Do I have to stand up?
Yes, sir. I should have made Brian come up there too, but I, I let him off the hook.
Depending on your questions, I may ask him to join me. But I think I can handle it on my own. So the province of Ontario has advised us that they are increasing the yearly rate, the fee that they change, that they will reimburse municipalities for fire vehicles responding to calls on provincial highways, which in Centre Wellington is Highway Six. And like most other municipalities, we use the same rate to charge out non-MTO services. The last time, they've also changed the process. So the process used to be that about every four or five years, we would get notice from MTO that the rates were increasing. The last time that the increase was in 2010. So the current increase is 450, from 410 to 450, which means that the half hourly rate goes from 205 to 225. And going forward, the province will adjust the rates annually based on CPI. So the other change in the bylaw is to authorize staff to implement any change notification we receive from the province.
Are there any questions for Wes on the change in this? Counselor McQueen?
Just curious if this comes anywhere close to actually covering costs?
Through you, Madam Chair. Would you like me to stand up? I don't know the direct answer to that, Counselor McQueen. So I, what I would like to do is for us to go back and have a look at what our actual costs are so I could give you the correct answer. I would tell you that it's very close, but I want to be more precise than that.
I have a question for you, Wes, actually. Another municipality in our county has actually signed an agreement with a corporation that goes out and they actually look after the assessing of the insurance claims and the collection of those fees from the insurance companies. Can you comment on that for me?
Certainly. I'm trying to recall the name of it, but I can tell you that council implemented the plan in December of 2013. Marquee, thank you. And, and that's, you're right, that's what they do. They, if, if there's a structural fire, they will recover the cost to the extent that they're able to through the insurance of the owner because most insurance policies include coverage for fire services.
Madam Chair, just to be clear, and Wes was correct, he said most insurance companies, not all do. So it's collected where possible and where we have information that the coverage is in place. If the coverage is not in place, we do not collect it.
Are there any other questions regarding this? Counselor Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just, I just want to be clear on the, the second part of the recommendation about the preapproval of CPI increases. Is that for all of the fees and charges in Schedule B or just specific ones?
That is only for, there's approximately 13 lines. It's, it's the lines that speak to the charge out rates for vehicles, the 450 per hour or the, or the 225 per half hour.
Okay. So, so the intent then is, is that those lines, barring any other change, staff will have the authority to bump them up by the CPI in a given year without it coming back to council?
It would be based on the notice from MTO. Whatever, whatever rate, new rate they give us, this would give staff authority to automatically implement that change.
Right. And if there were other changes or greater changes or, they'd still come back?
That, that would have to come back to council.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so the recommendation is that the council of the township of Centre Wellington pass a bylaw to replace Schedule B Fire Services of bylaw 2016-055, being a bylaw to establish the fees and charges for various services provided by the municipality. May I have a mover for that? Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor McQueen. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Now, while you're up there, we also have a word of attender for an asphalt hot box.
Okay, so this was a quotation for tow behind asphalt hot box reclamer. This is to introduce some operating efficiencies within Public Works and provide superior service to the cold patching. That was being done previously and the, so there were three bids received. The low bid did not meet critical specifications. The next highest bid, Johnstone Brothers does. There were four options that were included in the bid. So two of them, the solvent tank and the strobe light, recommendation is to exercise those two options from the vendor. The other two, the hoist winch, the spare tire. Public Works feels that they can purchase aftermarket products at quite a bit less cost than was quoted by the vendor. For the hoist winches, 20, it's $800 compared to $2,500 quote. The spare tire is 300 versus 750.
Are there any questions regarding this report? Well, I'll make a comment. I'm really excited about that, seeing that we're going to be able to fix our potholes with a hot product as opposed to a cold product. Mayor Linton, did you have a comment on that?
Through you, Counselor Lloyd. Just wanted to hear what it actually does because I just like hearing how things like that work.
Through Counselor Lloyd, yeah, so essentially this, this item's equipped with propane cylinders. So we're heating, reheating essentially hot mixed asphalt and, and repairing potholes, you know, water main break areas, sewer repairs, areas where we've, you know, the asphalt may have, have sunk and with a hot mixed product. And so we've actually been trialing a unit kind of on and off for the last year and it just holds up so much better. It actually binds together because it's going down hot, cooling, and it just, it lasts a lot longer. So, so we're, we're quite excited to, to use it. It's, it's a, seems to be a much better product compared to the cold mix that we're, that we're using currently. And yeah, essentially should reduce some of the effort required on the operating side.
Through you, Counselor Lloyd. Does it, will it replace all cold patching or it just selected or bigger projects or?
And we're calling for the road superintendent.
Yeah, I'll ask Rob Rosso to come up, our superintendent of Public Works, and maybe can get into the more details.
Through you. So it won't replace all of cold patch, but will significantly reduce the amount that we use. There'll be instances where we may have a water main break and we're going to need to put a patch in there after the, after the break. And going to this hot box, once it's filled up with cold material, it takes about eight to 10 hours to heat up to use. So we just won't have that timeline. And if there's any sidewalk that gets damaged for whatever reason, we'll have to maintain some cold patch for those types of things. And cost is, I mean, cold patch right now is around $120 a tonne and we're able to get this hot asphalt for about 78. So quite a, quite a savings.
Counselor McQueen?
This is quite a high percentage over budget compared to most products. Is that because of the Canadian dollar right now or?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's our feeling in this when this was initially estimated. I want to say, you know, we used a number, we developed a number back in 2004 in the summer of 2014, sorry. And, you know, we were looking at the dollar, I think was above 90 cents. I think it was 92 cents somewhere in there. And so of course now we're at 69 cents and this, this is coming up from the US. So, so I think that's a, that's a large portion of it.
Counselor Kitcher?
I guess this is directed towards Wes. Is, is, are there going to be a lot more of this where we are, like we have budgeted a certain amount and then the exchange rate changes our budget significantly?
Yeah, this, through, through, through Chairman, Chair Lloyd. So on this capital project, as Colin mentioned, it was, the estimate was done back in 2014. It wasn't adjusted in the 2016 capital budget. For the 2016 capital budget, staff did make adjustments for reduction in the Canadian exchange rate. It really affects the large equipment that, that is manufactured in the States. It really, it really doesn't impact small light vehicle, cars, pickup trucks.
Seeing no further questions, I'll read the recommendation that the council of the township of Centre Wellington award quotation Q06-15 for the supply and delivery of the tow behind asphalt hot box reclamer to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, Johnstone Brothers Equipment Corp. of Brampton in the amount of $50,382.18, including the HST and the options listed in this report. And further that the excess cost over budget in the amount of $16,290 be funded as outlined in this report. May I have a mover for this motion? Moved by Counselor McQueen, seconded by Mayor Linton. All those in favor? And that is carried. So moving on to information items, this is an item that I asked actually to come forward in this meeting. I think it's important for our residents and taxpayers to know that we are working diligently through our different departments, our corporate services applying for granting or other levels of funding. And, and they have been working hard on that. And we have had applied to the Small Communities Fund, Building Canada Fund for the project of St. David Street North. We actually were turned down and I'm just going to read a small excerpt from the letter. It says that we were turned down because of economic conditions and fiscal situations that are assessed using a combination of weighted property tax assessments per household, medium house- that are assessed using a combination of weighted property tax assessments per household, median household income, average net financial assets between 2010 and 14 per household, and average residential property taxes, user fees, service charges between 2010 and 14 per household as a percentage of the median household income. And so, I think it's kind of sad to say that we did not, we were not successful, but it's interesting that the province of Ontario is stating that we seem to be undertaxed, where I think a lot of our residents would argue that we are not undertaxed in any way through the levels of government that we have here. So, thank you very much to corporate services for putting in the application, thanks to infrastructure services for getting all the materials that had to go in for that application, but unfortunately, it was not successful. So, we're just going to have to keep trying on that one. So, thank you very much for your hard work. And then, there are the Minutes of the Economic Development Task Force item. Anything out of that that councillor Kittriss would like to comment on?
Thanks, Mary. No, thank you. I'll have any comments.
And the last is our tracking list for future items coming up. We have our term education strategy, and I know that they're working hard on getting that information. It was very good of councillor McQueen, actually, to talk about the mulching of the trees that we're going to be taking down from the Emerald Ash Bor, and how we're going to have to manage that going forward. And then, the marketing of broadband, that is an item that came forward in December for the Economic Development Task Force. Yes, councillor McQueen?
Thank you. On the marketing of broadband, that actually has been up until December, called Intelligent Community. And I didn't recall it actually being renamed Marketing of Broadband, but there's a whole heck of a lot of difference between Marketing of Broadband and Intelligent Community, so I'm not sure why it got minimized to a small piece of Intelligent Community.
I mean, I think we changed it simply because of the discussion that was held at that meeting, thinking that it had, was not the original Intelligent Community process, that the committee had already looked at that, made a recommendation, but that there were still components of that that council wished the committee to look at. So, if we aired in changing that, then the pleasure of council will put it back to the way it was.
Mayor Linton?
Through you, councillor. I think the idea, the intent was, is to broaden it. So, I don't know if this doesn't do the trick, but I think that the intent was to broaden it, because I think we were too narrow in our definition. I think what you've sent through email that we'll take a look at, that does a good job, and I think it needs to be, because what we had a discussion about, it wasn't just about an award, it was about a whole strategy when it comes to broadband. So, I think maybe marketing is a little bit too narrow, but because if I remember our discussion, it was to broaden, broaden that topic a bit, and go back to the Economic Development Task Force with a bit of a broader scope to the discussion.
And I agree with that. I just, because this really narrows it down to a very small piece of it, and so that's why I was objecting to it.
So, then, what is the proposed change that you'd like to see?
When I mentioned in the December meeting that the original Intelligent Community line item that was in there was, people felt it was restricted to using the Intelligent Community Forum as an organization to do it. And that was not, never my intent. That was just, it's still called the Intelligent Community. Whether we actually wish to use the Intelligent Community Forum process, that's completely different. And so, Intelligent Community is still a valid industry term that is used by, and I believe it's still the correct one.
Okay, so I believe we're going to change that back, then, to Intelligent Community. And are there any questions for media? Thank you. So, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Kittriss, seconded by councillor Fisher. All those in favor? Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned.